I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call divorce.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Here.
Strong.
Here.
Orange Steve?
Here.
Suresh Steve?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Here. All right, Public Communications. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard, to expedite matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by a group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. So this is for things not on the agenda. So anybody who wants to speak, go ahead. Please state your name.
My name is Barbara Plaza and you know me. I'm the owner of 143 Franklin Avenue and I asked the city council to investigate the establishment, which included Chief Gonzalez at the time on November 6, 2015. Adrian Moore knew about it, and also John Sherman. Asked that this would have been investigated because when Chief Gonzalez was chief, he knew on November 6, what I got to you in December of 2015, that I was held at gunpoint on my property where Sergeant McNally laid in wait to kill me on my property, and you knew that day because Priscilla Tarver called you that day. I'd like to have a meeting with the new mayor. And you, Adrian, how would you like to have been held at gunpoint and shot on your property while Sergeant McNally allowed somebody to come on your property and trespass? I've asked Mr. Gonzalez many times when he was a chief to cite John Bill Schaefer for trespassing. He wouldn't. He profiled me as a 51-50. I'd like to have it investigated. You knew for over a year, and I'm still trembling from it in fear. Nothing has happened. So you think it's nice that a citizen? I'm not a renter, I'm an owner. And you knew over a year ago that you knew your Sergeant McNally held me up in wait to kill me on my property. What's the matter with you guys? Public safety issue of domestic terrorism is a problem in this town, and you as Chief Gonzalez knew, November 6, 2015, that Bill Schaefer called Sergeant McNally to allow his son, William Schaefer, to trespass on my property, and he would never cite him for that. I need to be treated with respect. I'm a single white female. When Black Lives Matter last year, my life didn't matter to any of you at all, and I asked to have it investigated and nobody would. I am a citizen in this town. I'm a taxpayer that pays for your salaries, and I'd like to have it investigated. And I'd like you, our new mayor, and Adrian Jackson, and the lawyer, and John Sherman to be investigated. This is wrong. How would you like to have any woman in this town to be held at gunpoint, to be killed on her property? I'm an owner. You knew, John Sh-- you knew Bill Schaefer. You know Bill Schaefer. You would never cite him for trespassing on my property. You would never put it in the newspaper that I was vandalized, over $12,000 of my personal property on my property. And Bill Schaefer's been trying to get me off the land because he's been for the last 12 years getting everybody else off the land so nobody can live on it. I'd like to have you all investigated. And you should not be a mayor. You should not be a mayor for lying on police documents for the benefit of Bill Schaefer.
Okay, does anybody else like to speak? Okay, public matters. We're down to item three now, Discussion and Possible Direction Regarding the Establishment of Regulatory Framework for Cannabis Activities.
Okay, so this is a... Back in September, the city council designated a working group to research options for cannabis activities within the city. And the group met several times, held a couple of public meetings, and met with staff on three or four occasions. I want to have Dusty Dooley come up and really walk us through this. Essentially, tonight, we're looking for clear direction from the full city council. We had a lot of good discussion, but there was not clear consensus from the working group as to staff, as to what to draft, to bring forward. So we know that zoning needs to be considered. We want to come up with something that will stand up to any potential litigation, come up with something that will meet the needs of the community, both the people that are in favor of marijuana and those that are opposed to it, primarily because of nuisance issues. So Dusty?
Thank you, Adrian. Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez, council members, Dusty Dooley, staff planner. Yeah, that's right, Adrian. The working group met on three different occasions and, you know, we started by taking a review of the variety of activities that the state's looking to permit, starting in 2018. So we started by going down that same list that you have in front of you, and by the way, we provided you another piece of... two pieces of paper today that give a little bit of an explanation of what each type of those categories entails. Certainly brief, but I think it'll give you a better idea of what those categories mean as far as what businesses could be allowed underneath each of those permits. We had a general discussion of the variety of activities, certainly recognizing, you know, some benefits that could come from it, but also understanding that there's potential impacts that could come from certain types of activities, whether it's indoor growing or dispensaries, or even manufacturing, testing labs, et cetera. We identified some of the concerns. We discussed and brainstormed some ideas on how to deal with those impacts potentially. And ultimately, you know, felt that most of those activities could be supported with certain precautions in place, with the exception of outdoor growing. It was felt that, you know, certainly there's a lot of opportunities for... and more appropriate places for those types of activities within the county, and it may not be the city limits where you would deem that to be appropriate. Currently, our code does allow you to have six plants for personal use. And again, we're not talking about personal, this is commercial medical cannabis. We held two public workshops. We gave an overview of our discussions to the public and then provided an opportunity for them to give us feedback. And, you know, what we heard is, you know, most people were interested in having the city allow, you know, certain cannabis activities within the city limits. Again, sharing the concerns such as older security, access to underage children, et cetera. Then we also, again, you know, heard from folks that they were adamantly opposed to the issue. So it wasn't unlike some of the testimony that you have all heard in these council meetings in the past. Staff is seeking direction from the council on how... well, if and how we should move forward with the creation of a cannabis ordinance. Staff's looking, recommending that the council create an ad hoc committee to continue working with staff to create a regulatory framework for cannabis activities. There is a number of questions that need to be answered. Certainly, what types of cannabis business should the city permit? Where are the appropriate locations to permit these cannabis businesses in the city? The working group was primarily looking at allowing them in industrial lands. Then we talked about, well, you know, should we limit the number of permits? If so, how many permits should the city issue? What type of permit is that going to be? Is it going to be a use permit? Is it going to be a permitted use with a number of standards that have to be met? And then how do we go about selecting who gets a permit? So for instance, if, you know, if there's 50 properties that potentially are eligible for a permit, but we're only going to issue five for indoor growing, for instance, you know, how do we go about selecting those five in a fair and reasonable fashion? So again, you know, identifying standards for each type of activities, penalties for noncompliance. Another big question, are we just looking at allowing medical cannabis businesses? Or are we opening it up to recreational as well, as allowed under Prop 64, which was passed back in November by California voters? There's need to look at fees and taxes, which are probably different depending on what type of business we're talking about. But again, you know, looking for the ad hoc committee to really hash out some of these questions and come back to the council with a draft ordinance for their consideration. And I think there's probably a lot of people here that want to speak on the matter, so I'll probably just stop right there and try to answer any questions that I can.
So should we talk up here or should we just allow the public to comment to this point?
That's you. You can have council discussion first and then public comment.
You know, I think I'd rather have us talk a little bit up here, just to get an idea and maybe then solicit a little more discussion from the public, so... Ron, would you like to start as you were kind of on the working group?
Yeah, I kind of was. Actually, I did prepare an outline that what I felt would have included everything that you mentioned, and that would have been presented tonight for the council's consideration, the starting point, but I don't see it here. So I don't know what happened to it. Do you?
No, no, I don't.
You don't know what I'm talking about?
Well, we did look at, we reviewed the draft that you submitted, and just felt that it didn't address all of the issues that we felt it needed to, and we needed some direction from the full council to go forward.
All right, fine. I'm not going to go in that route. Go ahead.
Adger, you guys like this?
I think Madge was ready. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't mind. Or I don't mind it either. Yeah, I feel like we are kind of behind the times and that it's time to get on board with some reasonable, you know, incremental steps to allow some commercial cannabis activity in the city, you know, carefully. And I also think at this point, I would like to see us really just at medical cannabis as far as commercial activities. Down the road, I think it probably will be appropriate to start looking at recreational use because it is becoming legal, but regulations and guidance on that aren't really in place. And I think doing stepwise is going to be better for us to, you know, sort of see what works first on a more limited basis and then look at broader issues. I would like to see us have some ability to allow with conditional uses and review appropriate locations some commercial medical growing indoors. I'd like to see us be allowing the possibility of a testing lab and dispensary, and maybe more than one of each. But again, you know, with some appropriate land use designations and conditional uses that allow us to make sure it's not going to negatively impact the community or neighbors. So I'm hoping that we can get an ad hoc committee that will flesh that out in a form of a proposed ordinance, if the majority of the council want to go that direction.
And I'm concerned about... I don't want to open the floodgates and be talking about zoning for all of the community in terms of all types of prayers. I want to, for me, I want to hear what the community has to say, of course, but for me, I want it to be indoor, I want it to be medical related. I have, I think Dusty laid out a lot of the questions, and I think that as the committee goes through that, those are questions that we need to figure out. How much is it going to cost? What are the standards going to be? I know that I attended one of those meetings with Metropole and Orenstein, and the question came up, you know, who's going to... whose facilities are, you know, who's going to get rich and who's not? I think that's going to be a hot topic for us in zoning and how we're going to go about zoning this. So we want to make sure that we're really careful and impartial on how we, you know, how we go about figuring that out. And I, you know, being a new council member, I'd like to sit down with the city planner and with John Sherman and really understand the process.
Yep. First thing, Ron, I did not receive anything from you, so I have no idea what you were talking about.
I sent it to Adrian.
Okay. I'm just saying that as one individual for the council, I did not see anything. And so as far as I'm concerned, the two or three months that it took with the ad hoc last ad hoc committee, or maybe it was a month, I went, I came to all of the meetings that you had in public and did not have any consensus because I didn't know how it was dealing with you people that were on the ad hoc committee. That would be a place that I would like to start. I would like to at least see what you guys had done and the conclusion that you came up with. I'm, like some of the other people on the council, I'm really interested mainly just in the medical part of it. And... but I'm certainly interested in, not that I'm not aware of what the public thinks, because I have a business downtown and it seems like it's a public business. And a lot of people come in and voice their opinion, plus and minus for it. And I just want to hear what everybody has to say. I want you to pick a number. I don't want to have everybody one day lined up all the way past the video store to talk to me. You need to come in and make an appointment, and I need to say, okay, you can talk to me on this date for this amount of time or whatever. People that come in and spend four hours of my time when I'm trying to do my job is really very unfair to my wife and I as a business downtown. And so that's really what I have to say. Thank you very much.
You know, I would like to say something, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Ron.
Larry, in answer to your question, I actually, I absolutely agree with you. Let me see if I can find this damn thing. Okay, I did prepare a document that was something like nine pages, and was based on everything that we discussed at the committee meetings and in the public meetings. Everything that came from staff, everything that came from the public. And I put it together in this document outlining the history, the reasons for doing this thing, the... I referred to a study that was done by an organization called the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. That's a federal grant program administered by the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy. And I was put onto this thing by a... an executive summary that was sent to probably the whole council by Dr. Bill Ted Dawson. And this was just an executive summary, and that piqued my curiosity enough after reading that, that I went to get the document, and I read the entire document. And I put some of that in this memo that I prepared that you haven't seen. Then I went on to outline the various things that we discussed, as Dusty mentioned. Where should these things be placed? How do we choose them? We also, I also referred to questions that are going to be raised about how much would the fees be? We have to determine how much the fees would be. And there was another interesting point that was brought up by one of the participants at the public meeting. It had to do with a carbon tax credit, a carbon tax. And when I first... and we talked about this with staff quite a bit, and I didn't, I couldn't get my head wrapped around it. I couldn't understand how we could justify charging a tax to an indoor grow. I mean, the whole basis of the thing is, is that if we want to do all of these operations indoors, an indoor grow uses a lot of electricity. And it gave me a kind of a creepy feeling to be put in the position that we're going to dictate that you can only grow marijuana inside, but yet while you're doing that, you're going to be using a ton of electricity that is not really great for the environment. So how do we balance that thing? And then I remembered the magic word, SEQA. And I looked it up, and I found out that SEQA, while it may not apply to this, SEQA is still an overriding law in California that states that any jurisdiction that either undertakes or approves an activity that will have a negative effect on the environment has to apply SEQA regulations or SEQA mitigations. So what was suggested, and I finally got it, is that if we mandate that indoor growing is the only growing that will be permitted, then we will have to institute a, I don't know what you would call it, a carbon tax or whatever. And that money that would come from the indoor grow operator would be used to build a huge solar array that the city's been talking about for years anyway. And we would probably put it somewheres near the sewer plant, which would supply electricity to the sewer plant. But it also could be used to mitigate, to offset the electricity that the indoor growers are using. So it's kind of a win-win situation. That's in here as well. But as I said, what this is, and, you know, to Larry's comment, and he's absolutely right, you guys don't know what I'm talking about because you haven't seen it. And I was hoping that it would have been distributed for this meeting in enough time for all of you to read it and understand it, and it would be a starting point. It would be a place to start the discussion, but that didn't happen, so there you go.
Did you want to?
Yeah. So we had, what, three staff level meetings, and then the two public forums. And at the staff level meetings, we had myself, our planner, our code enforcement officer, our then chief of police, our water and utility superintendent, and finance director, because we need to come up with something that is going to work. It's going to work in terms of finances, it's going to work in terms of our water and wastewater systems, it's going to work in terms of our zoning, it's going to work in terms of code enforcement. And as much as we had some good philosophical discussion in those meetings, we didn't, there was not clear direction from that, those efforts to staff as to what we needed to come up with. And rather, and, you know, I appreciate, Ron, that you spent time working on this, but you have a professional staff, the council has a professional staff that has experience in different areas to put these documents together under the direction of the council. And we just felt at the staff level that we weren't there yet, and that given that we do have new council members, we needed to bring this back and get some direction from the full council before we put more time into it.
Okay, now it's back to me. I did get, Adrian did email, which was basically Ron's stab at city ordinance. I don't think it was a memo, I took it as a city ordinance.
I wouldn't call it a stab, I would just call it a three-month deferral.
Okay. So what I saw is it obviously needed to be gone over. I would actually think that it would be helpful, Adrian, if you did distribute that to everybody, just so everybody could see what Ron had prepared. But my thoughts, and I think I shared them with Ron, I shared them with Dusty recently, is that I think that we need to look at an ad hoc, an actual ad hoc, not a working group, to give direction to staff to start looking at formulating an actual ordinance with the idea that all council members weigh in on what we're looking for. I think it's here. The state has come up with a mechanism to make this legal. Obviously, there's federal issues, which that's something that Jim has to look at. And we need to... and it sounds like the public obviously has raised some concerns and also raised desire to have this industry here. So I think us as the gatekeepers here, the community, we need to make sure that something comes back to the community, that it's both responsible to those that don't want it, those that want it, the community as a whole, the environment. And so I would be looking to create a, an actual ad hoc committee to work with staff in developing an ordinance. I mean, I campaigned with the idea that this was something that the community wanted, we needed to do something that worked and to work for Willets, and obviously taking into account everybody's concerns. So that's where I'm coming from. I'd like to open up to the public now. Jim, do you have anything?
No, I completely agree with you that, given the timing of the election and the seating of new council members, and we lost Holly who previously served on this working group, it was logical that we bring this issue back once this council was seated and once the mayor makes his new ad hoc committee appointments and follow the direction of the new council.
Well, you know, it was always the plan of the committee. I mean, that was stated right from the get-go, and everybody who was at these public meetings can attest to this fact, that the plan was to prepare a report for this meeting for consideration by the council and to use that report as a starting point.
But what you prepared was a draft ordinance.
No, it wasn't. It was not. It was, it was an outline, it looked like it made... I don't know if you got the...
Ron, it says proposed an ordinance.
Yeah, I know what it says. Read the thing.
I know, but it says proposed ordinance.
I know what it says, but that's not what it is. I mean, read the document.
All right, folks, Ron's talking right now. So I would like to open this up to the public. Okay, go ahead, Cindy.
Hi, my name is Cindy Logan. I have worked with teens in this area since I basically showed up 25 years ago. I have never been involved with marijuana until I had a daughter come home from Europe who was basically put on hospice because her Crohn's went into her pancreas. Well, they're scared of going out and trying to find out how to buy marijuana, if it would be organic, how it would be raised. She was taking immune suppressants, I didn't want to put her on anything, so I learned how to grow some pot for her. Never sold it, nothing else. I see the difference it's made in her life. She's back in her master's program. She was off of the opels and the roller coaster ride that she was on. And I will want to, for many reasons, suggest that the city of Willets make some kind of ordinance that they only want to do with organic-only processing and growing. A couple of things, because I was learning and I threw myself in, like, to the hilt to learn about pot suddenly. In Colorado, the sewer treatment plants were severely impacted because of indoor grows. There is the equivalent of the UC extension in Arizona, and they have put out a report on indoor grows and the amount of times that they may start out organic, and because the plants are stressed and they're not outdoor, they end up getting pesticides put on them at the last minute rather than losing a crop. This area is known, as I've come to know, for outdoor organic pot, and that's something we should look on and keep going after the medicinal uses and be a research center and embrace that through the city. So people who really are interested in what could be done medicinally have a place to go that they know is organic. Anyway, I'm really pushing to see that you do some type of organic standards, measures to be used, especially since you're talking about medicinal. Thank you.
Good, go ahead. When you guys come up, please state your name, and mostly for TV land and for our clerk.
And the microphone does not amplify in the room, it's for the TV.
Thank you, Madge.
My name is Jeffrey Apodaca. I'm a Willets resident. I'd like to first say congratulations to all the new council members. I'd like to take one of my min- I'd like to take one of my minutes for silence for Lynn Kennedy. Okay, as a nurse and a father, blah, 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 I support Kenneth She's idea. We had all these meetings and his stuff seemed to fit the guidelines. And then I offer my services to John and anybody in the council that's on the ad hoc committee for this cannabis industry. And then off tangent, we do have a plan for the trimmings next year, so we'll be able to take him out of our city and keep him up at the hog farm. So, thank you.
My name is Phil Barkstall. I just want to state for the record that I am pro-legalization and I support reasonable, fair, effective regulation. I want to begin by suggesting that if cannabis dispensaries are eventually allowed in Willets, a grading system of the THC potency of cannabis products be implemented and the products be clearly labeled with that potency information. There is a competition currently among cannabis farmers to develop the highest THC content, that's the stuff that makes a person high, and as potent as possible. This is not the marijuana that was around when I was a young man, 40 or 50 years ago. This is a new crop, it's a very potent drug with many, 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 many times stronger than what was literally a weed back then. The super-strong marijuana is now often refined into even more potent concentrates. These concentrates are smoked, vaporized, added to edibles like gummy bears, pastries, bottled beverages like coffee. Some of these products are very attractive to children and that concerns me. A man told me recently, a client, that he was given a very small piece of dried concentrate to use medicinally, he ate a small portion of it and he was soon so stoned that all he could do was sit on the floor. He was very sick, he was frightened, he said that this lasted for hours. This is why I think cannabis and cannabis products must be evaluated and clearly labeled for THC potency. Certainly, one cannot go to a pharmacy and purchase other drugs without seeing a label telling them the potency of that drug. Cannabis should be no different. In November, I visited a cannabis dispensary in Oregon to interview the owner and a worker. Even though I told them I was from California and I was there to gather information and not as a customer, they were very friendly, they were very helpful. One thing I learned is that no cannabis product can leave any Oregon dispensary unless it's in a sealed, childproof container. I was shown this bag, and this is a childproof bag, and I'll pass it around, but I want to see it. I want it back. I had to register with the dispensary in order to purchase this bag for a dollar. I'm now in the state of Oregon, the cannabis dispensary is a result of this purchase. Other containers, including standard pharmaceutical jars such as this one, like many of us are used to, is another way that they're released from the dispensary. And by the way, Oregon, which is a no sales tax state, charges 25% sales tax on the sale of recreational cannabis. I have additional information that I am willing to share with those who are interested. All you have to do is get ahold of me.
So you carry this across state lines?
I did, but I had nothing in it.
Allegedly.
I had trouble with it too, so.
Go ahead, ladies.
Hello, my name is Joyce Sandu, I'm a physician assistant and a cannabis specialist. And this is Janice, who I believe you've met.
Yes, I'm Janice Cinek, I'm a registered nurse. So each one of you, I hope I now has had a chance to read our vision statement for a dispensary and clinic here. And I was, we were wondering if you've had questions at this point in time for us. I acknowledge that I received it earlier today, I'm happy also this evening, I did appreciate it.
So we're not really sure, since you've had that document to review, what-
I just got it today.
Oh, you haven't read it yet?
No, I have not read it yet.
Oh, okay. Well, we can read it aloud.
I got mine at 4:30.
Oh, dear.
Well, I think what would happen in practice would be that this would become part of the ad hoc committee's deliberations. I met with these two young ladies two days ago, I guess, and we had about a one-hour, very good conversation. Basically, what they're proposing is that the, if marijuana dispensaries should have on staff or available a trained medical person who can meet with the clients and describe to them exactly what they need and what's good for them. I think the concern is that right now you go into a dispensary and you're dealing with a clerk. It's like a candy store, you know, if you want the gummy bears or whatever. And, you know, there's really no, to my knowledge and understanding, there's no, there's no real discussion about the value or the downsides or anything of any of the products that you're looking at. And I think that would be the purpose of this, this plan, and also it would be like a follow-up kind of a thing, and I was just going to leave them hanging. So that's the essence of the plan. I think it's excellent.
Thank you.
There are some issues that have to be resolved that we discussed as well, but I think it's got, it's a good start.
So basically, at this point, our vision is to open a very small, only medicinal dispensary because we're a healthcare provider, so the recreational component of cannabis is not something that I am familiar with or would know how to advise on. My approach is purely for health and medicine. And in addition to the, offering the products that would all be organic, tested and labeled, we would offer medical consultations and follow-ups and close guidance. And this is something that is very much lacking in the marijuana service industry. We haven't been able to join those two forces even though it's called medical marijuana, largely because of the licensing issues with the DEA and a lot of doctors are not willing to come forward as cannabis specialists, although that's starting to change now.
Kind of related, but do you guys operate anything at this moment anywhere else besides?
No.
Okay.
And I feel very strongly that nurses need to be in the dispensaries, absolutely.
Yeah.
We have a tremendous amount of training and background. I would rather be at the bedside right now than being here, but this is something that I'm very, very passionate about. And we, as registered nurses, you know, we're, we're right there at the bedside 24/7 with the patients that are suffering and could benefit greatly from medical cannabis.
I'd be interested in seeing, do you have a full business plan?
No, not yet. We've gotten as far as the vision statement.
That's something that I would be interested in, what does a business plan look like for a dispensary?
Well, part of what we're, we need from you is to know if you support our idea, and if you do, we'll proceed. And if you don't, it's a lot of work to do, you know, if it's just going to be, if it's not going to happen, so.
Madge, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I also, I met with Janice a day or two ago, I guess it was yesterday, and I, I really think this is an excellent step forward in legitimizing and controlling inappropriate medical uses and that there are some, you know, obviously more and more information available about the extremely important medical uses of cannabis and also different formulas for different kinds of diseases that are really very important to distinguish. You know, it's not about getting high, it's about getting things that actually help the symptoms, whether it be nausea or seizures or other things. So I think this is a wonderful vision to move forward on, and I think that is something I would love to see developed in our ordinance, is that we have that ability to approve something like this and to make the distinction between this and a dispensary that is just sort of come on in and get whatever you want, you know, gummy bears or whatever. That's a different dispensary, that's not what we want necessarily in our community. So I'm very happy to see this. Yeah, and I also, I think that they may be thinking along the lines of having this be a nonprofit, and that would be an extra, you know, to me, another benefit of it, is that would be controlled by a board of directors with medical personnel and it wouldn't be just run by a private.
No, it would be a community service.
Yeah, that, and that's again, a service to patients who actually need this medicine.
Right.
And that's a good idea, because I was thinking about the economics of the thing.
Yes.
You would be adding an extra level of cost, but if it is operated as a nonprofit, I think that could help to even the playing field a little bit more.
Can I get a clarifying? In the middle of the document, it says the business will be based in a medical dispensary, and then it goes on. So is the business the administration of the cannabis and the care, or is the business the dispensary as well as the care?
It's a consultation care. But part of what's missing, and what's so hard as a clinician, is that I advise people about what I think they should start using, but then I send them away and I don't know what they purchase, how they use it, there's no follow-up. So I want to know what products people are using, so I want the clinic slash consultation practice slash dispensary to have our own products that we can get to know. It won't be very big, I don't think. It doesn't take very much.
Jeff, I'm going to allow you to ask them, because the question's directed to them.
Do you want to give clarification? Because I do the doctor recommendations over the last 17 years, and we have three doctors, maybe they have a cave walk, blah, 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 blah. And you can't actually track because you can tell which patients go and you can do the counseling a lot. When you say the counseling, are you saying giving recommendations to patients?
I don't know if we're going to be able to offer medical marijuana recommendations. Depends on what happens with the law.
With what law? I currently do that, we've been doing that for 17 years, we have three physicians, they write recommendations.
Well, I have to work under an MD in order to warrant.
Yeah, we have three MDs now, that's what I just said.
Well, people can get their recommendation anywhere.
So the question, the answer is no, you will not be doing recommendations, so the counseling.
I don't know if the answer is no. I don't know yet, we only have a vision. We don't have the details ironed out.
Well, can we talk after the meeting?
Thank you, that's what I was looking for. If you guys want to continue that, you guys can, I just thought maybe you had a quick question, so. Ron, you had another one, or? Okay. Larry, did you? All right.
Other?
What's that?
We haven't necessarily heard everybody yet.
No, 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 I just wanted to see if anybody else wanted anything more with these ladies, otherwise. I would envision that that's something the ad hoc group would look at, would be dispensaries. And as far as business plan or all that, I mean, I personally don't want to tell you how to run your business, I think it's one of those, you propose, this is what we would be doing, and then obviously working with our planning department to see if that is permissible, then I would look at that. And whether, from the business plan end of it, you're going to have to make it go. I mean, we can, you know, I could sell ice to Eskimos and they may not want to buy my ice, you know, so I would think that would be something beyond what we would do other than either permit it or not permit it.
Right.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And you have our contacts if you have any questions.
All right. Do we have anybody else from the public that wants to speak? Oh, yes, folks, and also if you could sign in, so when the clerk prepares the minutes, we'll have your information.
My name is Jeannie King, and I'm a 35-year resident of Willets. And what I hope to be to the, I want to thank all of you, by the way, for serving on the city council. I know it takes a lot of time and you don't get adequately compensated for your time, and I appreciate it very much. I hope I'm an every person to you and that I can speak and remind you that there are people that live in this town who do not grow dope, who don't smoke it, who don't trim it, who don't transport it. They work regular jobs, they raise their children here, they, they're, and you need to take them into consideration, deep consideration, when making your decisions in regards to marijuana in this town. And because you will find, if you don't, that people like myself will move away. I've known many people who would have stayed in this town who have moved away because of the marijuana that's associated with this community. I have not honed my understanding of marijuana from some vague something. I grew, I grew up in San Francisco and was involved in the Haye Ashbury in my early twenties. I was very involved with the marijuana in my early twenties. I worked in the schools for 20 years and I've worked, and I've seen the repercussions and the effect of the marijuana industry on students in this town, as has Larry. And I also have been very involved in the last 13 and a half years of trying to help people stay clean and sober. And I've seen the effect marijuana has had on people. So today, I was taking care of my granddaughter and we went out to splash in muddy puddles. And part of what she wanted to do was drop rocks in muddy puddles. And I was thinking, as I was listening to you, that when I drop the rock in the muddy puddle, I can control how I drop the rock, but I cannot control the ripples that ripple out. And there, you need to ask some deep questions, because marijuana, taxes, fees, whatever may fill the coffers of this town, does not, that in itself, make it a good thing. You need to ask some deep questions. I have heard of a couple of incidents in Humboldt County. There was a company that owned three care homes for elderly that were saying they were going to close, and one of the reasons they were going to close is they could not afford to pay their helpers what the marijuana industry did, and so they couldn't keep employees. And then recently, I heard about a business, a mechanics business that had been in operation, I can't remember what town, in Humboldt County, I think Fortuna, but I could be wrong. He'd worked and had employees for 16 years, 17 years, and was a really, offered his employees a really good wage, and anyway, he recently lost his lease on the, on the building he was in because the owner of the building could make more money to, providing a space for a marijuana industry. And I also wanted to say that, that you and I all know that because it's referred to as medical does not necessarily mean it's medical, and that marijuana-
Jeannie, I think the-
I don't, okay. Marijuana grown here, grown here will go to children, will go to teenagers, will go to drivers, will go to parents, all over the United States, and you need to take that in consideration, because your name will be on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Do we, anybody else, do you know Alan?
Good evening, my name's Alan Valeri, and most of you know I used to work here once upon a time. I want to wish you all Happy New Year, a little bit late, and new council members and the people that are re-elected, congratulations. This is a big issue for you to tackle, and I agree with Madge, I think step at a time would be, would be a smart way to go. I think you're appearing at least to be open to looking into medical at least, and I would say that would be a good first step. Recreational, obviously opens up a whole other can of worms. I want to talk about a couple of things that I feel would be important in this discussion, if you do go into the discussion. You've got a council there to advise you, of course, on legalities and all this in the federal, so I'm not going to touch that. But we all know that Willets is in a transition, the bypass is affecting local economy. We need industry in this town. Now, whether or not you want to go into this kind of industry is a discussion that we need to continue to have. We talked about dispensaries, where does the dispensary get the product? Who's going to make this product? We have a lot of opportunity, we have a lot of entrepreneurial-type folks in this town that have a lot of talent, that can grow a lot of different things, it could be processed and manufactured and made into agricultural products and sold locally. Medical cannabis, I think, is one of those opportunities, if it's controlled properly and you look at the- and you look at the standards that you want to impose upon it. I think there are permit possibilities that your city planner can point out. One idea would be like an administrative permit that could be issued by the city that has a bunch of performance standards that are set by you. And if something meets those performance standards, it could be allowed. The permit could be appealing to the council if some of them didn't like the way the permit was issued. So that's one idea. I have a product here that I use for my dog. This is, I can't give it to you, because Adrian said she would keep it, and my dog needs it. It just shows you the kind of packaging. This is a professionally-produced product. And these kinds of things can be produced here locally, and sold at dispensaries, or sold at other places that this could.
What is it, Alan?
It's called, I don't have my glasses on. Some kind of paw. It's a little, it's a little dropper you put in your dog food. And my dog is an elderly dog, and he's obviously perked up a little bit. He's very sensitive to the cold, and now he seems to be getting along better.
And it contains cannabis?
This is cannabis. It's a CBD cannabis. It's not, he doesn't get high. He doesn't like lock out. I think Cindy Logan mentioned, you know, I think Willets can brand itself. Willets is being known as a healthy place. We have this hospital. We have a lot of healthy food things going on in town. We could brand the cannabis products here that are, you know, non-GMO, organic. It's like Napa Valley can, my red light is on. Napa Valley can, can charge a lot for wine, because it's, the product is good. It's, we could do the same here for Willets. I don't, in closing, we might not pan down. I don't think, you know, you should treat it much differently than any other farmer making a product. As far as taxing them and requiring outrageous fees just because it's a possibility, I think just treat them, treat them like it's a farmer raising a product, and permit fees and taxes should be accordingly. Also, I just imparting to say, indoor is a very expensive way to go, very high energy and environmental consumption. I recommend that you look for e-mouses as well.
Good evening, city council, and Happy New Year, I guess, and welcome to the new council member. My name is Kevin Shih. I've been here for more than a year and a half, year and a half. And I had brought my proposal before, in terms of how we want to set up a kind of operation here in town to not just grow pot supposedly, and definitely get the research and the development side of the cannabis industry, and get the human resource development and learning. And this doesn't have to be the old stigma. And I feel the stigma of kids getting their hands on it, people dropping off school to grow pot in the hills. All those are the result from the nonexistence of a specific regulation for so long. And people don't know if there's a better way of doing this. And this is exactly why the state changed it, and now we have a framework on the state level to really regulate this issue, and simply just like alcohol. I mean, if you don't have a regulation, yeah, kids in China can buy alcohol when they're three, four years old. It's okay, because there is no regulation. But over here, if really everyone starts buying and purchases their cannabis through dispensaries, you, you will see that being controlled through this process that's already here. And frankly, teenager use of cannabis and other drugs, related drugs, has been dropping in Colorado and Washington, for the state has legalized cannabis use. So that, the proof is there that sometimes we have to think outside the box to really control, I guess, teenage use of this, this product. So, and like I mentioned before, Willets is, whether we like it or not, Willets is known for this for many years, where Menesino is known for this for many years. Maybe it's the best stigma before, but it doesn't have to stay that way. We have the human resource around here, we have the knowledge base around here. Frankly, we also have the location benefit that's right at the gateway of the Emerald Triangle that's going to be more famous for producing cannabis from now on, instead of more famous for, I guess, growing pot in the hills. So this is the time that we can change this stigma. We can do something to make what is known for the best quality of cannabis, or medical cannabis, internationally, instead of we're talking about, okay, we don't want Willets to be known of people coming here for pot. I don't want that either. And we can set up program with the school.
Wrap it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. We can set up a school with, we can set up a program with the school, with the hospital, to do more research, and bring more highly educated professionals in, and we have the resources already here. So, and time is the essence. It's, we've been waiting for too long. So, and I think the details are already there. We don't need to be here to, to figure out how to regulate this, because we will have guidelines for it. We just need to move towards that direction and learn as we go with it. Thank you.
All right. Oh, Dr. Kevin? Kevin? She had a question.
I have a question. I've had lots of questions and comments from people in the community. I've not been to your facility. I've just noticed the barbed wire fences many people have over this last year. And the question is, is what's going on inside the facility, and is, is that people?
At this point, I'm sad to say, but nothing is going on there yet. We came in, we did a lot of construction work to try to get that place ready for indoor cultivation facility. But from the beginning, our philosophy is, we want the city to be on board. We want to be clear of what we're going to do, and we're going to have open door policy for government. We want to set an example for this industry here in town. So, construction has been wrapped up for a while, and we didn't go further to do more constructions, because we don't know what the direction is. And frankly, we have, we have brought in the city to just take a look at how it's going to be, and how the future, how is the future can look like. So, and for the new city council members, definitely, well, the chief, Jerry, when he was chief of police, he has visited that place as well. But I'm more than happy to bring you there to take a look at the new technology, the highly, I guess, controlled environment for producing this product. Because I know people have concerns with high-power use, and organic, and all that. And we're all for organic, and we want to do organic indoor as well. But the fact is, when you're doing outdoor, you can't really control what type of stuff falls on the, on the final product. So, as organic as you can be, there are patients that's very allergic to other type of, I guess, pollen and other things, that you just can't provide that really pure quality of cannabis medicine producing outdoor. Greenhouse, I agree. I think greenhouse is the future as well. And I had suggested to the council before that, that will be a good way to look at it, to do, to produce the best quality and purest medicine, also with energy, energy use in mind, for sure. And we want to be environmentally friendly. We're not, we're not going to have any leakage of either air or water untreated, or anything like that. And we definitely want to be as environmentally friendly as we possibly can.
Can I feel like to answer my question?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Any other questions?
Yes, we've got an implication.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, go ahead. I thought he'd raised his hand, but.
First, I'd like to begin by showing you what's possible. This is essential oil of cannabis. Each one mil bottle represents an entire pound of fresh material. One mil, one pound. So, why would I just pass out seven pounds of herb to the council? The same reason that I actually took it to the hospital. The same reason that the nurses and the doctors call me every day. I'm also a cannabis consultant, I'm a certified herbalist, and a certified aromatherapist. I've been in this county for seventeen years. I get really nervous when I speak in front of people. I honestly can't even tell you the number of people that I've treated in this county. It's well over several hundred. You haven't heard of me, because I stay quiet. I'm producing a drug. Okay? What you're holding has no THC in it. Look at the color of it. It's pretty amazing. Think about the scale. I just informed you that you're each holding one pound of herb. I'm not going to do very well in an indoor grow, because I can't grow enough indoor. I need acres. I'm a farmer, a real farmer, growing real medicine. And I want to have a permit like a real farmer would have. I'm so knowledgeable on this topic, that I would actually really love for people like government to call me and ask me questions, because I'm highly knowledgeable about this topic. I could probably talk to you guys for hours about medical cannabis, and tell you kinds, all kinds of things you don't even know about your own body. So, with that said, I would really like that people in charge of these policies know more about the medicine. What's actually possible? Did you know that what you're holding in your hand actually kills penicillin-resistant MRSA? Don't you want that in your hospital? It's THC-free. It's completely a legal product. There's a lot of things I know, okay, schedule one, okay, okay, sure. But it's the same caliber as hemp. Whole Foods is going to be carrying this product.
Need to wrap it up, but if you could make sure you sign in and give us your name.
I will. But, so my point is, is that please take the time to learn what's possible, because I'm right here, and people call me all the time. I come into these houses through hospice, in these homes here in Willets. So I'm already administering medicine in this county. I am, and I have no problem saying it out loud. It is time to come out of the shadow and be real. That's all I'm trying to do.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, last chance. Okay, we'll bring it back up here. Does anybody else up here want to say anything? Figure out. Nope?
I think they said it already.
I am interested in an ad hoc group as opposed to a working group, so that we can give that direction to staff, so that we can formulate our ordinances, and have something that makes the community happy and addresses, as best we can, everybody's concerns. And that will, in my opinion, stand the test of the legal folks, and go from there. And so I would like to formulate a, Larry, go ahead.
I would like to do the recommended action of making an ad hoc committee, and council members, Madge and Jerry on the committee, and develop a, an operation that can come up with some type of things that we can look at as a whole council, to come up with a positive direction to go with this. And if you two would accept that, I would appreciate it, and I so move.
Could you have?
Just that our, our local rules provide that the mayor shall select the, the members of the ad hoc committee, subject to the majority approval. So I think the way to do it is for the mayor to say who's on the committee, and then see if there's a majority approval for that.
Well.
Did I overstep my bounds?
Did you have something to do? Okay. I, I would like to, again, establish that committee, and I would like Madge to serve on that with me. Madge brings us some planning experience, and I think that's where this really needs to go next, with input from the whole council. Obviously, we're not going to push everything through. And I would probably encourage you all, independent of this group, to do any other homework. Kevin was actually pretty good about giving us a tour there. And so that when we talk about the finished product, or the finished ordinance, that we can make the best decision possible. So, that's what I'd like to do, is establish a ad hoc committee, and I would like to serve on it, and I would like Madge on there. Now, do we need a motion, or just a?
You know what? We never have in the past. We have never made this a formal motion. If Madge is willing to serve on it, it appears that you have a majority supportive of it.
Yeah, I just would point out that I do have, not recently, but in the past, I've written some ordinances and land use plans, and unconditional use permit applications, and all of that. So I agree that we need to get to that level of precision about how this process is going to work, and what, you know, what kinds of land use implications are involved. So I think, even though I was reluctant to get involved in this whole subject, I think it's appropriate that we have a pragmatic and land use-based approach, so I'm willing to do it. Somebody's got to do it.
Okay. So. That's it?
That's fine.
Can I get, could I get some parameters of what it is the committee will do? What is, could you summarize your, until I can read, maybe just five points of what it is you want to do?
But what I would like to see is Dusty and Jim bring us with, with what we've heard today, and what, and again, with any input you would have to get to them. So if you have those concerns as a council member, make sure it gets to Dusty and Jim. And then in, in the ad hoc group, we would review those, the work product, before it comes to the whole council. And, and obviously, talk to any community members that may have other input, which you could attend, like Larry, and just, I think you attended a couple of those meetings. So you would basically would attend if you did, but you would not be a, you'd have to be the fly on the wall.
Correct.
So that if you wanted to listen in on that.
And I'm also very eager to read Ron's report, and that should help us, you know, get off on a good footing with what work has already been done.
So. Okay, I guess we will move on to item four, consent calendar.
I so move the consent calendar.
Do I have a second on the consent?
Second.
Second, have a motion to second, and.
I just want to make a comment. Item 4C is acceptance of grant offers from FAA for airport projects. The fiscal impact section was blank, and so I just wanted to note for the record that a budget amendment, an amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the airport fund, that would be part of this motion. The fund currently has thirty-one thousand dollars in it. If the fund is found to have a negative cash balance at the fiscal year-end, a loan must then be authorized by the, from the general fund.
That would occur at that time, or our motion now would authorize us to?
We would bring back to you at that time, if we needed to obtain that loan. We're anticipating that there won't be a fiscal impact. It's going to be in staff time. And so this fifteen thousand dollars reflects staff time to administer this grant.
And I, and I read the, it looks like we stand to gain a lot of money to do some work up there. work up there.
Two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion to second and so on our consent calendar, the minutes were pulled. Item A, item B, the journals, and item C, the resolution accepting or declaring acceptance of the grant offers from the Federal Aviation Administration in airport projects to safety compliance of Willets Municipal Airport, Dallas Field. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Let me carry it. Informational reports. Item A, building inspection activity report.
Could I?
Go ahead.
Well, on the sales tax summary report, there was a lot of information in there and at some point, I think it'd be great to have.
Susie? Oh, yeah, she's here. So I figured I'd just, building inspection activity report, are we, actually, we're just looking, we, no actions required, so. Did you have anything you wanted to add? I just didn't want to pass over.
No, not really. Things are starting to pick back up. It's a seasonal thing. It's looking good.
Okay. And now the sales tax.
So the sales tax report is the report that we have through June of two thousand sixteen. So we don't have any of, of the effect yet from the bypass in here.
The baseline.
Right. And of course, we had a pretty good quarter. We were down two tenths of one percent.
Was that related to just gas, just being stagnant?
The fluctuation of gas prices mainly. But gas price, gas over, you know, the prior year was down considerably. However, we've had a lot of construction and other things that increased. And also, we're doing really good at eating.
Well, the next one, water consumption and revenue chart, I figure you have something to, to weigh in on this or?
I can talk about it if you want, but it, it's a report that we put out every month and it shows, it just shows the fluctuation and also the dollars. You can see that November was, it was a short month as it always is and if you look at the, the scale, it's always down.
And to quote Bruce, we're in the business of selling water, but we don't always have people wanting our water. All right. I guess, anybody else have anything or Madge?
No, that's fine.
All right. Item six, right to appeal. Persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have the right to a review of that decision by court. The city has adopted section one-nine, four-point-six of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to ninety days, the time within which decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. And then item seven, commissions, agencies and authorities. So we'll, I guess, item A, sitting as successor agency, resolution to approve recognized obligation payment schedule twenty-seventeen eighteen and administrative budget for July twenty-seventeen through June twenty-eighteen.
And so you need to actually recess as a city council.
Oh, okay.
Convene as a successor agency, take this matter up.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we're recessing as a city council and now coming back as the sitting successor agency.
Yes.
Thank you. Kind of new to this, so I'll get the hang of it. All right. And so we need a resolution to approve our obligation.
Right, so Susie can take it from there.
Again, this is an annual report that is requested from Department of Finance, not requested, it's obligated. And basically, the only expenses that we have are some overhead expenses as well as a payment that we have to repay for the, the bond that we issued before we became the successor agency. So you can see, if you look through the reports, that especially on page two has the most information. It shows how much is left owing on the bonds and when the, the termination date is two thousand twenty-four. So we have, we're going to be doing this for another eight years.
Oh, okay.
And we'll be doing it annually unless this council would like to do a last and final. If we do a last and final, there'll still be reporting done, but it won't need to come back before this council, nor will it need to be presented to the oversight board. Because after we approve this, then it has to go to an oversight board and that oversight board also has to approve these meetings.
And so pardon my ignorance because when I was in my other role, I probably slept through some of this, but why don't we do a last and final?
There's absolutely no reason not to, but I have to have council approve.
Oh, okay.
In order to do a last and final.
I mean, I want to be transparent with the public, but it sounds like we're just kind of regurgitating.
The same information over and over, but we're taking out, you know, one eighth less each time.
Yeah. So I guess I would just look for Adrian to give us some direction there.
If we have that, we can bring back a resolution and then, as long as I know that.
But I just want to make sure, since we do have more than one new council member, that there is a clear understanding of what this is all about. We had a redevelopment agency. The governor did away with those and so every local jurisdiction has to unwind down their agencies and this is just part of that process. And that's just a very simple overview, so I don't know if you have any specific questions about this.
I'm just wondering, are, are you recommending that we just do a final report as opposed to continuing to do this every year?
Because we don't have any significant expenses and it's basically the bond payment, we would still recoup our expenses, but we would have fewer expenses because we wouldn't be doing the meetings. And I, I think that it's beneficial for everyone to do a last and final and then just do annual reporting.
Is the current recommendation is not a last and final?
It is not.
So if I were to move, which, if I'm one of the moves that we go that direction, then you'd have to come back with that.
Right.
Well, I, I would like to move that we develop a, a resolution to have this become our last and final submitted and.
And can that, I don't know what our timeframe is, can that happen on our next meeting?
Yeah. So we, the, the action tonight to adopt the resolution will meet our timeframe for what is needed by the state.
For this.
The last and final is just a completely separate action.
Oh, so we should go ahead and go this round?
Okay, all right, so then I'll move the recommended action and then also direct staff to come back at an appropriate time.
Good.
With the closing, closing the books.
Okay, do I have a second on Madge's motion?
Yes.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All right, call for the vote.
Any public discussion?
Oh, thank you. Jim, anybody from the public that would like to speak to this?
Tell us what you did.
Basically, they.
Authorized?
Oh, okay, basically, we had a redevelopment agency, we, the governor took it away. We are basically, there's no more money except for money to pay for our, our obligations to loans and so they have to meet as a successor agency to basically authorize the repayment of these loans and fill out paperwork to the state to show so that we, because we were allowed to keep some of that money to pay back the money we owed. And, and so, see this part, I did not fall asleep. And so what she was talking about today is that instead of having to come every year for the next eight years and do this meeting and have other meetings, they're allowed to do a last and final. This is what it's going to be and these obligations are, and they just continue as we're obligated, just we wouldn't have to do the meetings and they wouldn't have to spend staff time on those other meetings, so.
And then I just wanted to add that, at the other cities, all the cities in the state of California have, you know, under the governor's mandate, had to establish successor agencies. So this city council sits as the successor agency for the Willets redevelopment agency.
That's why you guys switched. I felt stupid.
Yeah, no, no.
And they do the same thing when they sit as the planning commission. Some jurisdictions have separate, separate bodies, well, it's a separate body, but they have separate other individuals that serve in those capacities. In addition to the successor agency, there's also an oversight board. And who sits on that oversight board, and this is also mandated by the state, is, there's a county representative, there is a city rep, I sit on the board for the city, there's a representative from the county office of education, one from the community college district, one from the local fire district. There's a community at large member that is appointed by the board of supervisors. I think that's it. So there is an oversight to this board and Willets did not have as much to wind down, if you will, as other jurisdictions, for example, the city of Ukiah did. So we were already in good shape to not have a lot to deal with in this regard. And so for us, it's just really been a routine housekeeping item every six months.
So, all right. Well, we got the public out of the way here, so I guess at this point I call for the vote.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Warren Stieck?
Yep.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary, Mayor's office.
Yes. All right, motion passed. Now. City manager reports and recommendations.
We pulled item eight A, which was discussion and possible action to approve a memorandum of understanding with the school district for lease management repairs and maintenance of certain facilities owned by the city. Those facilities are our swimming pool, tennis courts, and the Bechtel Grove Middle School gym, museum. And we've had this on a previous agenda and pulled it at that point as well because we weren't quite at the finish line in our negotiations with the school district. What we're hoping to accomplish is, as we have done with other city facilities such as the art center and rodeo grounds and I think recently the Boy Scout hut, is we have leased our facilities to different groups and then they took, took over operations and maintenance of those facilities. It's worked out well. Sometimes other groups of people, whether it's a nonprofit board or one of the local service organizations, is in a better position to manage those facilities. So we're looking for the same type of agreement with the school district. We've had a number of conversations. It's, it's, I think we're in agreement in concept, but we have to work out some of the details in the contract itself. And so we anticipate having this come back finally to the council for action at the next meeting on February twenty-fifth with the school superintendent taking it to his board at their next meeting on February first. So I just want to explain why it was pulled and, and what the nature of it is. Okay, under verbal reports, mostly just want to talk about the storms. It was, it was quite a wallop that we had over the last couple of days. I think overall, we fared better than, than other parts in the county. We, of course, did have some flooding. We provided updates via email and in our Facebook page about, it's the typical spots, East Commercial Street by Lenore, Railroad Avenue, North North Street, Creekside, thank you, the entrance to Wagon Wheel Mobile Home Park, typical trouble areas. In some respects, I think that it wasn't as bad as it has been in recent years because of some efforts to keep our storm drains clear of debris. We still have ongoing issues with our creeks and not getting permission to get into them and get them adequately, adequately cleaned out. So we'll continue to work on that with Fish and Wildlife and Army Corps of Engineers over the coming months. We didn't have anybody displaced or evacuated, so knock on wood for that. The storms did inundate our, our storm drains and our water system and our sewer system. Our crews did a terrific job addressing everything and I want to give a shout out to all of them. They were working well into the night, as you know, in, in pre-deep water. We did have an issue at our wastewater treatment plant, not related to the storms, but the timing was not, was not very favorable to the fact that we were going through, our system was being challenged. One of our local internet providers who provides internet service to our wastewater treatment plant decided to terminate our service there with no explanation and, as you can imagine, these plants operate with a, you know, some sophisticated technology to keep everything in check. And so we are in the process of, we had no health and safety issues for anyone. We had workarounds that we, we could go to, but it was a surprise to us that this occurred. Again, no explanation and so we are going to be switching providers and that'll happen in the next couple of days. And like I said, we had a workaround that we could utilize in the interim. I want to just go into some water and sewer departmental reports since we don't have anybody here tonight from those departments. The Maple Street pump station that feeds Laurel Street tank has been replaced. The old one is being inspected and tested at Duncan Pumps in Lakeport. The three-million-gallon tank, SCADA project, SCADA is the technology that runs the plants, was completed January fourth. This project was in the budget to replace the old phone line system that was used to communicate when the tank called for water, opening the pressure-reducing vault. And this was a huge upgrade to our system. It now communicates via Verizon cellular data, so it's not dependent on the internet connection. The majority of, of this project was done by Tom Bond, who's one of our city employees, as he built the two control panels from the ground up, which is a complex job and he really did a great job. We would eventually like to get all of the storage tanks on the SCADA system so that we can monitor and have alarms to notify us when they're getting low. This will help control issues like the Laurel Street tank draining that happened on December eighteenth. The water treatment plant lost power twice during the storm, causing some extra hours being spent by the operators to ensure that our tanks stayed at optimum levels until the power was, was restored. We can basically go for a couple of days with a power outage and be fine. PG&E was very responsive to us in, in helping to escalate our situation to the top of the priority list and the distribution system handled it very well. At our wastewater plant, the third blower startup was delayed due to scheduling conflicts and we're hoping to have that up in, in the next few weeks, which will provide an automated system. And the wastewater treatment plant weathered the storm quite nicely with plenty of capacity left in the storage ponds. And so those were being monitored very closely. And then we, two months ago, authorized, the council authorized a co-purchase with Brook Trails Township for camera equipment to inspect our sewer lines and that purchase was made last week, they actually, the equipment arrived last week. And finally, and this is very good news, we wanted to mention that the operators at both plants did an outstanding job in handling the plants in the storm. The water, the wastewater treatment plant had no violations for two thousand and sixteen, which is remarkable. The water treatment plant had only one minor violation in the distribution system this past summer, which has changed as of January first of this year and is no longer a reportable incident. So it was a great job by crews at both plants and again, I just want to thank them for doing such a fine job for the community.
I think you had a question.
Question. Who was the original internet provider and what day was it that the service was cut?
We have several internet providers for various facilities in the city. The wastewater treatment plant was being served by Willets Online and our service was terminated on Monday with very little notice.
So a couple hours?
Yes.
So finance, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to comment, I, I mentioned this to Adrian the other day, that especially being a city council person and only meeting once every couple of weeks and being able to set policy or whatever we do, but I, I just have to be incredibly appreciative of the staff. the staff, and in particular, the water and sewage treatment plant, because their job is totally 24/7 relentless. It doesn't ever stop. And they just keep going and doing what they have to do to, to get us water that's drinkable and provides to the whole city, and that takes our sewage and processes it. And I mean, it's just, it's an amazing dedication that they show to just do that 24/7 and do such a fine job.
They have it pretty well dialed in, and I will share your appreciation with them. They always, it always makes them feel good. We have talented crews, and we have a lean staff, and so everybody has to be at the top of their game and working as a team, and they are doing that.
And it's not like we're, have many, many extra staff people either. They're all, you know, really stretched.
Finance?
I have two things. First, Hersch just announced that they are going to be reducing their discount rate from seven and a half to seven percent over the next five years, which means that the employers and the employees will be picking up the difference over the next five years, so we can expect another rate increase. And this comes on the heels of, as most of you remember, Hersch changed in 2015, 16, you know, 14, 15, their mortality rate and the age of retirement and disability, which also caused an increase. So these increases continue to mount, and they keep trying to, as they call it, smooth it. So we just have to keep that in mind as we're, as we're, as we go along. But we can expect an additional rate increase in July 1st, 2018, so we'll continue with the increase that we received in 14, 15 until then.
You're saying this was like a 2% difference?
It's a half a percent. But it's, but it's half a percent on their discount rate, which is, you know, to simplify their, the interest that they expect to receive on, on their holdings. And therefore, it's going to be a considerable increase across the board. So maybe a 3, 4, 5% to employers.
I'm not sure how that translates into our, you know, the fiscal impact on the city budget, but I'm sure we will find out.
Yeah, as we get closer, they'll, they'll, they'll give us exactly what our rate is going to be, but we can, we should expect over the next five years to see at least 5% more.
Just have to build it in term multi-year, correct?
Yeah. That's right, exactly. The other thing is that we sent out our water bill, as we always do at the end of the month, but this month, there's a new little red embold underneath where you would put the amount that you paid, where you can now go to online and pay it, or you can call an 800 number. It's actually an 877 number, but it's a toll-free 877 number 24 hours a day to make your payments. And also, envelope, there's a little reminder that you can pay online.
And, and you had said before that there is a small service charge for doing it this way?
There's a small service charge, but that small service charge is, is less than the service charge that was being charged before.
Say that again?
Is it less than a first-class stamp?
Was there a service charge?
We used to charge 3% for our credit card, and now it's 2.75.
Okay.
But it doesn't go through the city now.
Right.
It goes directly to the third-party vendor.
That's reasonable, I mean, it's a reasonable amount.
Yes. That said, water shut-offs went out in the mail today, and the water shut-offs are going to happen on Tuesday. If you get a water shut-off notice and you haven't came into the office and paid by 10:00 AM, the water's going to be shut off. We're going to be closed on Friday and Monday. But you can pay online or play by making a phone call. And, and all throughout the weekend, you can make those, even Monday, and that's fine.
Okay, so if you do it online during the weekend, it's registered, it's in the, it's in the system?
We will get it on Tuesday.
So even if you get it the day late, that's, that's okay?
We will get it Tuesday.
Good. I think he's got a question for you.
So for like my wife who pays the bill or who gets to pay the bill, then I have to run down here to the city. Did you send out a note? Because I don't know how to explain it, look at the red dot, or phone the dot?
It's, it's on the invoice. You have to open your invoice.
She does that. She can read it online now, or call that number and pay it like that.
Yes. Yes, and the phone number's on the invoice.
You can also find the link on the city's website.
You can do it your chances. So obviously, that helps a lot, and really appreciate that. As all the time, this is what sometimes I mean, we're kind of constantly dealing with that, so that was great for us.
And additionally, you can set up recurring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think GISA works. I don't know if you guys have where?
GISA does work. It doesn't work?
Okay, we tried GISA card, he said we don't want to have GISA yet. It has to be master.
Legal?
All right, Adrian, city clerk in human resources?
Well, just want to thank Dolores for filling in for Kathy while she's on vacation. And our HR, Karen is not here tonight, but I don't believe there was anything to report on that front.
Okay. Public safety. Do you want to... Okay, he's not here today. Community development?
When you address Dolores, if you could start with employee of the year, Dolores. She prefers that title now.
You know why?
So, really quickly, so probably when your constituents aren't asking you about cannabis, they're asking you about highway signage, so I just wanted to briefly give you an update on that. Next week, there's a meeting with Caltrans, and I've been told to expect an update on, on what additional signage we should expect in the near future. So hopefully, I'll have some good news to report out at the next meeting. Staff's going to have a resolution as well at the next meeting, asking, requesting Caltrans to establish some downtown Willet's signage on the highway. Caltrans regulations require the jurisdiction to pass a resolution, so we'll certainly prepare that and bring that forward for your consideration, similar to what you see with Cloverdale. We've made sure to show examples of other jurisdictions who have similar signage to what we're requesting, so that it's very clear that what we're asking for is not out of the ordinary, what we see elsewhere in similar communities along the highway. I've, I've gotten correspondence from a number of folks that sort of have had different experiences with Caltrans staff and seem to have some different viewpoints about how you go about establishing logo signage for your business on the highway. I've seen an email that went out from Lisa Epstein with the Chamber, and as well as a post that Councilman Rodriguez made, which is correct, they need to contact Mr. Aaron Dorsh, who works with Caltrans, and his phone number's 445-6389. I was able to send out hopefully a clarifying email to, to key community leaders today that are going to be distributed out to folks. But if you are in business and you're having trouble, you have questions, you know, definitely feel free to use.
So the Chamber got that, so they'll get it out to their members?
Yeah, yeah, and they, they sent a, a similar email with correct information before. But again, just, just wanted to provide that additional clarification to folks, is that I've seen some...
Dusty, he's got a question.
Do you spell that name or repeat it under real?
Yeah, Aaron's first name is A-A-R-O-N, last name Dorsh, D-O-R-S-H, and phone number Also, again, as Revit Ed starts, starts meeting again, and maybe we're going to figure out who's going to be having fun with, with us on that committee here later, but we're going to continue to explore the idea of establishing civic billboard and possibly some gateway signage. And so if there's any property owners there that are interested in letting the city come in and put a billboard up, or even if you're interested in putting up one for yourself or for others to use, please, please give me a call or stop by the office, and happy to explore that with anybody. Also, Ron, just to clarify, Adrian did give me the information that he sent, and my comment on it was, didn't quite read like an ordinance to me, but from listening to you, I, I think I have a better understanding of what you're going for. And so, you know, everyone should have that information. Ron did an excellent job of, of really explaining, you know, the history of, of the regulations and then sort of the logic and the pathway that led towards the idea of, of exploring that issue further. And you have the ability to intimidate me, Ron. I think when you looked at me, I got scared. So, but I, you know, we could talk about it more, but you know, you know, that, I don't want, you know, that word to go unappreciated. There certainly was a lot of great information in there, and I'll talk to you about it more later if you want, but I wanted to provide that clarification. And obviously, staying busy with a lot of things, but yeah.
What has become of the attempt to regulate vacant commercial properties?
Yeah, we actually have a draft ordinance together, and that'll be another subject panel that Revit Ed will be taking on, and it's very possible that we'll be coming forward with a draft ordinance for the full council's consideration.
Great.
Sure.
Dusty, when you come down off of the freeway and you're down to make the turn at the bottom, there should be a sign that says Willets, whatever way it is, and some type of mileage thing of, you know, it's two miles or three miles or whatever, because when you get down at night, there's no lights to show where the, the town is, and if you needed gas or something, that would be a smart...
Yeah, that, that's exactly right, Councilman Stransky, and I think we have that request with Caltrans.
Coming from the south, yes.
Yeah, and it's, it's also necessary on the, on the other ones too. And then me personally, I, I might have shared this with the council before, but very quickly, I, I witnessed that myself, where folks got off and appeared to have the idea of like, "Well, I don't know if there's anything here," and then they, they quickly got back on the freeway. And my gut is, 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 you know, if they had additional signage saying services this way, and hey, it's, you know, you only got a quarter mile, half mile to go, they, they likely would have chosen to continue going to town and get gas, whatever service they looked for.
Yeah, because I think you had something with, like hotels, maybe something, so they know it's there.
For instance, when you get off on the, the north intersection and you, you start heading to town, there's a sign saying Willets to the left.
They just put that in?
Yeah, that's maybe an opportunity to put those service signs underneath and then possibly, you know, a distance symbol. So we threw that as an example of maybe where we'd like to see that type of signage.
It would even be good to even have the, the camping one on the bottom of that, because if you come into Willets, you go through, then you hop on the 20 to go to the KOA. So it is really important that, that as tourists, that we know we can get off there.
Yeah, if we can get that symbol even, we'll, we'll certainly ask for it. There's always, there's a lot of rules, as you can imagine, and so even the distance of the KOA to the exit or to that sign seems to come into play. And I don't pretend to understand them all, but as we don't get what we want, I'll certainly be exploring them.
Can I ask you the resolution for, so that we can address it at Revit Ed? Are you going to bring that at the next council meeting? Are you going to bring that in, in a month? Does that need to be done before the committee can start working on the specifics? Or is that part of what the committee does, and they make a recommendation to the council?
I may have not understood your, your question correctly. Are we talking about the vacancy ordinance?
I'm talking, I'm talking about the signage.
Oh, the, the downtown Willet's signage?
In, in reference to the signage, you talked about how, in order for additional signage to go up, that the council has to have a resolution in place?
For specifically for downtown Willet's signage.
Okay.
I, I've not been told that we need to pass a resolution for our other requests. It was specifically just the downtown.
I, I think where she's going with this is, is a misunderstanding of the process. The Revit Ed addresses certain topics, they bring it back to the council for consideration. At that point, the council takes action, and at that point, if it's appropriate, then a resolution will be required.
Thank you.
But that comes out of the committee.
Okay. I was looking for the outline. Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
I just wanted to add something. Yesterday, the board of supervisors approved a letter of support for Willets to, well, a letter to Caltrans requesting additional signage in Willets, alerting travelers to services and attractions within the city.
Right.
And I believe they, a resolution was also part of that.
Good. Okay.
Even without a third district grant?
They contacted us last week and...
Well, John Pinches, I think, was behind that a little bit.
Building Department, some things are starting to come back on. I've actually enjoyed some of the, the quiet time to work on floodplain issues, and as Adrian mentioned earlier, started dialogue with Department of Water Resources and Army Corps of Engineers to start looking at what we can do. You know, it, it's obvious that the floodplain in the city limits is expanding, and, you know, there's only one thing that can cause that, and that's restriction. So we're, we're going to start looking at what we can do, and I think probably the first step in that case would be for me to find some grant money for hydraulic stuff and have the hydrology run. My feeling right now is from basically the south side of Commercial Street, from that bridge to the wastewater plant, because that seems to be, every single year we flood, that seems to flood more in that location than any of the other locations. And some of the other locations that used to flood are not flooding quite as bad. So we're working on that, as I said, with Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Water Resources. And I'm learning off a lot, learning off a lot. The building permit applications have picked up recently. Chris Wilks from Little Lake Fire Protection District was here earlier. We co-inspected a couple of buildings this last month and find, I, I don't want to mischaracterize it, but a ghost ship type situation in a couple of our buildings. And we moved quickly to, in one place, restrict access to that building only to repair work during the daylight hours. And the other one, the landlord really just jumped on the corrections, and they've already been issued building permits for the correction work, and they're already in place. So I don't really think that we have much out there that, that represents that kind of danger, but this was a similar situation where we had artists' spaces being lived in and a lot of materials stored in the buildings that blocked the address exits and things like that. So I think we've done a good job, and I really appreciate the help that Little Lake Fire District in going and inspecting these buildings and coming to a conclusion of what to require and how to get this job done.
I'm glad you mentioned that, the, the ghost ship thing. That's a question I had. From what I've heard on, on the news reports about that place, they, they had, it had not been inspected in like 30-some years. And my, my impression was the inspections were done on a, a complaint basis, or if they were not given permission to go inside the building where the owner wasn't there or whatever, and that's what they're saying why they haven't inspected it in over 30 years. Now, I don't know the truth of the matter, because I think it's still under investigation. Could you kind of talk about that a little bit?
No.
Regarding our, our situation here?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I'm really looking forward to this vacancy ordinance, in that it establishes an inspection regimen for these buildings. Currently, there's, other than if I decide that I think something's wrong in there and demand, demand to be given access to the building, there's nothing in our codes that requires a building to be inspected on a regular basis or anything. So it's, it's basically when somebody notices and wants to deal with it one way or another, I can't just go knock on somebody's door and say, "I'm here to inspect your building."
Okay, so if somebody calls you, anybody, what you, whether they're associated with the building or not, and they call you and they say they suspect that X is going on inside the building, is that enough cause for you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, and I have the legal authority to demand entrance.
But other than that, you can't just knock on the door and say, "It's time for me to inspect you"? inspect you"?
Well, honestly, we don't have the time.
Okay, you don't have the time, but do you have the authority?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so we don't have to fix that?
But normally, that's not how things are done in this industry.
Okay.
Normally, we wait for, basically, for the property owner to come to us. That's not to say that every once in a while, I'm driving down the street and I don't see something going on, and go, "Oh, wait a minute, that should've got across my desk, and it didn't," and I'll stop and we'll deal with it.
So, under that scenario, I mean, is it possible that there could be a ghost ship kind of a thing here in town, and that someone's gonna come looking for you afterwards?
I've looked pretty hard. I don't think we've got much out there now.
Okay.
These were the two, the two situations. One of them I was aware of, and had been working with that property owner for a long time, but it's a difficult thing to do. The other one, we just found out now. We literally received a phone call on Monday in the work to...
Okay, but the main thing is you're on it, and you have whatever support you need from the council to do what you need to do.
Absolutely, yeah. And the last thing I want in this town for somebody to say, "We were ignored, and that's why this happened."
Good, thank you.
Thanks, John.
There was a question.
Yeah, I just have a question, what building were you referring to? What building?
I'm not sure it's appropriate that I identify the buildings, but the owners are not cooperating, the situation is being worked on right now.
Yes, I have a question to John Sherman. So you have authority to go on private property where you like village shaking halls, and why don't you go check on somebody's truck? He gets vandalized?
That's not why I have the authority to enter so much property.
Thank you very much. Why are you being around my property?
I'm not here to discuss it.
Yeah, you have no authority.
Okay, so, item ten, did you wanna read this, or did...
Well, we may have some committee reports from meetings that have occurred thus far, and then we'll take up the mayor's appointments under eleven.
Okay, so, League of California Cities.
That was Holly.
That was Holly.
They had a special meeting in December, where they appointed a new second vice president at the next league meeting. I don't believe I had the date yet.
Okay, MCOC, that would be...
MCOC, yeah, did not meet.
All right. LAFCO, that was Holly, too, right?
Right.
Yes.
And Mendocino Solid Waste and Management?
Haven't met.
Okay. Mendocino Transit Authority, who's that?
I think they, gosh, I can't remember. They met in December, and I wasn't able to attend.
All right. Finance Committee, has it met, right?
Has not met.
Revit Ed?
Has not met.
Did not meet, okay. Water and Wastewater Systems?
Has not met.
Ad-hoc Committees, that, I don't know.
None have met.
Other committee reports?
Just that, EDFC is meeting tomorrow, and depending on what the assignment is, but I kind of wanna go to get up to speed on what's happening there, and I did get a notice that the Mendocino Wool project is very well done with construction, and now they're getting equipment in there, so they're not operational yet, but that project that I reported on last year, that EDFC with new people investing, is moving forward and is going to become a success.
Okay.
And UKIA.
Item eleven, Councilmember sources on Kim.
Jerry, when you do the council member committees and whatever, do we have an alternate that could go to these, because these are very important to go to, and if the person can't go, we need an alternate that can go? Did you put that into your...
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, these are the mayor's appointments for 2017, and I sought feedback from each of the council members, and then sat down with our mayor to discuss the various appointments. Not everybody was, we weren't able to give everyone exactly what they were looking for, but did our best to spread it out, so I'm gonna go through, or unless you wanna go through this later, recommendations. For standing committees of the city council, which are agendized public meetings pursuant to the Brown Act, we have the Finance Committee, and that's always the mayor and the vice mayor, so Jerry and Larry will serve on that. Water and Wastewater Systems Committee, all these standing committees meet quarterly or more frequently as needed, and so it's recommended that Councilmember Stransky and Councilmember Orinstein serve on that committee. For Revit Ed, which is our Revitalization and Economic Development Committee, it's recommended that Mayor Gonzalez and Councilmember Rodriguez serve on that committee. Then we go on to Regional Boards, which are the outside agencies such as MCOC and LAFCO and the like. League of California Cities, Redwood Empire Division, it's recommended that our mayor serve on that committee with alternate being Councilmember Vice Mayor Stransky. MCOC, Councilmember Stransky with alternate Councilmember Rodriguez. Economic Development and Financing Corporation, Councilmember Rodriguez with alternate Councilmember Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority, ENSWA, Councilmember Strong with alternate Councilmember Orinstein. Mendocino Transit Authority, Councilmember Orinstein with alternate Councilmember Strong.
Which one was that?
MTA.
I did that one already, I really don't wanna do it again.
I think, though, you'll have to take some discussion after I go through these. For the Mendocino County Museum Advisory Board, Councilmember Rodriguez. And then we move on to Mendocino County City Selection Committee appointments. The City Selection Committee is a county committee, and it is comprised of the mayors from all four cities in the county, and they get together at least once a year to make appointments to various regional boards, and so LAFCO falls under that, as does North Coast Railroad Authority and the new agency or board, Sonoma Clean Power, as well as Airport Land Use Commission, and so it's recommended that for LAFCO, Mayor Gonzalez and alternate Councilmember Strong serve on that. North Coast Railroad Authority, we're not sure that we'll have a seat on that, but if we should, we'd like to see Councilmember Orinstein on that with alternate Councilmember Rodriguez. And for Sonoma Clean Power, again, not every city has a seat on that, and so the mayors will decide which, who amongst their city councils will serve in those one or two seats that are up for grabs. And so for Sonoma Clean Power, that's a new program that will go into effect July 1st, and it's gonna be governed by a Board of Directors that will include Sonoma County folks as well. So, our understanding is that there's one seat available, and we would offer up Councilmember Strong for that with alternate Councilmember Orinstein, but again, this is a seat that may go to somebody on the UKIA City Council or the Fort Bragg City Council. And so those, we didn't slate anybody for the Airport Land Use Commission. If there are no other nominations on the City Selection Committee that you're gonna be attending next week, we can revisit that. And then ad-hoc committees, Caltrans Ad-hoc Committee, the Cannabis Ad-hoc Committee, and the JPA feasibility study for the wastewater treatment plant. So for Caltrans, we recommend Mayor Gonzalez and Vice Mayor Stransky. For the cannabis, that's already been decided to be the mayor and Councilmember Strong. And the JPA feasibility study for the wastewater treatment plant is a condition of the settlement agreement with Brooktrails Township Community Services District. It has been terribly active, but we certainly wanna keep it on the roster, because we will need to meet with them at some point in time and forward this effort to look at the feasibility of establishing a joint powers authority between Brooktrails and the city for the operation of our wastewater treatment plant. And so we would recommend Councilmember Strong and Vice Mayor Stransky to serve on that.
Okay. Well, I know that, Ron, you brought up that you weren't interested in MTA.
Yeah, and actually, I've been serving on ENSWA for many years as well, but, you know, I need a break from this.
Okay, is anybody else interested in MTA?
I'm willing.
Yeah, okay. And Matt, your group would be the alternate to MTA?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the other ones?
You'll give us a written...
Yeah, okay. And do we need a motion on this, or just...
No.
Okay, and I guess we move on to item B, resolution appointing representatives to represent and vote on behalf of the city at the League of California Cities, Redwood Empire Division, Business Meetings and Division of Legislative Committees.
So some of our boards do require that the council pass a resolution designating who the representative will be from the city to those boards, and the League of California Cities is one such that does require that, and we have designated, well, you can see on the resolution that we're being asked to adopt, that we have to designate the primary representative for the Division Business Meeting, as well as an alternate, and then a primary for the Legislative Committee, as well as an alternate, and typically, it's been one and the same, because those meetings occur for the Division quarterly and on the same day, so they usually start out with the Legislative Committee meeting and then move on to the Business Meeting. So what I would recommend is that you designate one person, and per the mayor's appointments, you're gonna be sitting on the board.
So, and Larry, Larry's the alternate at Sarah's.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I still move.
Do I have a second? Second, all right. Motion second, any further discussion? Any from the public wanna weigh in on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. And no enactment of ordinances, good and welfare? Everybody have some good and welfare?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to say that I got through my first meeting with an electronic device, and I think that was a really big deal for me.
I did not succeed. I, my battery went down, I was responding.
I charged mine before the meeting, 'cause I thought that might happen. Sabrina, you had some good...
I would just like to say that it was my first month as a council member, and I have thoroughly learned myself into the role, and have gotten out there and talked to business owners, and really finding out, and I'm looking forward to meeting with more people. I keep encouraging people, I'm not too busy sending an email, I have to have lunch with people to hear about what's happening out there. One of the things that I had mentioned to Adrian that I was gonna bring up this evening is, I hear from a lot of people that they feel a bit removed from what happens in this room. I know that we're here to conduct business, but I would really like to see more people feel comfortable about coming to the council meetings, so I would like to see potentially once a month where we recognize a civic group, take fifteen minutes out of a meeting. I even example the first group that comes to my mind, and that would be the Boy Scouts. They put up the flags in the community, they picked the Christmas trees recently during the Fourth of July, they pick up the trash. There are many civic groups that really impact Willetts, and I feel like we really need to shine a light on those groups, and so I would hope that that's something that maybe we could put on the agenda on a regular basis each month, is select a civic group. And then, let's see, I'm looking forward to next week, going with Mayor Gonzalez and Adrian to the Sacramento for the seminar, that will be taking place there, to learn what's happening, how to be a better councilwoman, that sort of thing, and I'm looking forward to Adrian setting up some appointments. We talked about taking a tour of the different departments in the city, so that I can really get to know what's happening.
Do you wanna do that in wet weather, or...
January's pretty booked up, so let's, but if we could set those up soon, that would be wonderful. And then, technology, we talked, I talked to Adrian a little bit about how I'd like to see the city become a little bit more tech savvy and user-friendly for those, for that generation that uses technology, and I know that our website, a lot of times, I'd like to redirect people to use our website. For example, if you wanna go and find the Chamber of Commerce, you have to click, and then you have to click, and you have to click. It'd be nice if there were like some hot keys you could find out right away. So if you were wanting to know what's happening with signage, you know, you're not going through all these extra steps, you can get quickly to certain sites, so I would just encourage that.
Anybody else have anything?
Did you wanna...
Yeah, there is a, the Howard, Frank Howard Memorial does a prayer breakfast every year, and this year, they have a special guest, Dr. David Levy, a neurosurgeon and speaker, who'll be speaking Thursday, February 2nd, from, I think, let me see where they...
Eight o'clock.
Well, that's eight o'clock here, but don't they do one in the evening for the public?
They do.
Yeah, the one at eight o'clock is by invitation, but they also do a presentation for the general public. And then I received as part of the correspondence, the Boy Scout Troop 88 in Willetts is proud to announce that Robert Dwayne Hayes was awarded the rank of Eagle Scout September 17th, 2016. Like to congratulate Robert Hayes on that accomplishment. That's not an easy thing, so, let me see, Rotary is gonna be putting together a crab sale, is that looking like the end of the month?
It's happening.
Twenty-eighth, I think.
We received an email stating that it was happening.
Yeah, so...
Saturday night. Rotary, that wasn't the Rotary thing?
Maybe that was another one.
Yeah, there's a dinner that'll be happening, coming up, too, so...
Next month, I think.
So, and, trying to think, anything else? That's all I have. So, no closed session, so I guess I just need a motion to adjourn? So move, all right. All right, thank you very much for...